You have a call in Mayor Protem.
Can I get a motion to excuse our mayor?
I will make a motion to excuse Mayor Perrigo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll move on to item four A, approval of the regular city council meeting agenda. Is there any amendments? I think there was one amendment of a removal of eleven E ten.
Correct, that's shown on the agenda. Let's make a motion to remove it, please.
Can I get a motion to the amended agenda?
Make motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next up is the first reading of ordinances and schedules of public hearing, item seven A. Did we forget that? Oh, sorry. Approval of minutes five A, approval of the regular city council meeting minutes from June ninth. Is there any changes or adjustments that needed to be done?
I make the motion that we approve the regular council meeting minutes from June ninth.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. On to item seven A, first reading of ordinance five two nine to adopt the City of Aligan zoning ordinance and zoning map. Have a report from the city manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a reminder for city council, all ordinance adoptions is a two-step process for the City of Aligan. We have a first reading, which we are having this evening, and then we will be scheduling the public hearing. And then there will be, the second reading will occur at your July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. So for the past year, probably a little bit longer than a year, the City Planning Commission, which is comprised of nine city residents, has been working on doing a complete overhaul to our zoning ordinance and our zoning map. In twenty twenty-three, the city finished their master plan. So after the completion of the master plan, it was time to look at our zoning ordinance and bring that into conformance with our master plan. They had, well, I'm going to consider one public hearing that lasted over three months between April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five and June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. No public comments were received. The new zoning ordinance and zoning map creates several avenues to build more houses in the City of Aligan, including accessory dwelling units as a right in all residential zone districts. On the screen is a copy, or yeah, is a copy of the zoning map. On the right-hand side of the screen, one can see the various zone districts. These are all new zone districts except for neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and central business district, and industrial. So they got really creative in trying to create districts that allowed for flexibility in the housing. The zoning ordinance is in your report, so you're able to dive into it. The zoning map is in your report. It is also on our city website as well. So tonight, you are just going to be accepting it for first reading and scheduling that public hearing for July fourteenth. Do you have any questions for staff after your first review of the ordinance since you received it in the packet?
I do. What drove the two changes that are proposed?
So what Will was referring to is in the planning commission's final draft of the map, there's actually three changes. In the final draft of the map, there were two changes. This area, can we turn the laser on or no? Thank you. So, thanks, Parker. Over by Airway Drive and two twenty-two, where you have that hot pink, I can grab this. No problem. So over in this general area right here, this whole area was going to be mixed industrial-commercial. So it's going to be a transitional area from two twenty-two of commercial uses into the industrial. However, we have an established neighborhood right here on Ridge Court. And the planning commission, after much thought and discussion, felt that this area should be preserved through zoning to remain residential. On the back half, this is the Aligan County, Aligan credit, Aligan Community Credit Union parcel is this parcel right here. The front half is where their building and parking is. The back half is just vacant woodland. And they have a desire, maybe in the future sometime, to split that wooded lot off and build more houses off Ridge Court. So they thought that was reasonable. The second one in map change was down here, Swan and M eighty-nine. There is two vacant lots off Swan right here. And typically along a trunk line, you'll have commercial on both sides of that road. However, with Swan being residential and those parcels only being accessible off Swan, the planning commission, through their discussion and deliberation, felt it was only appropriate that those two lots right there go residential. So they made those two changes, you know, as part of the final recommendation to council in regards to the zoning map. In regards to the zoning ordinance, they made one recommendation. The current zoning ordinance has a separation requirement for properties that abut waterfront, specifically from the high point of the bluff. And so they wanted to keep that separation. It's ten feet unless you can have a structural engineer prove that your structure can be closer than ten feet, but you have to have a structural engineer, you know, stamp and put their license on the line to ensure that what you're going to build isn't going to, you know, result in erosion and fall into the river. So those are the three changes. Two were a map and one was the text. Any other questions? As I always say, you can always reach out to me via email or phone, and I can answer any questions you may have. I want to thank the planning commission. You know, Patrick's been part of this now for several years. It has been a heavy lift for the planning commission, and it was a complete rewrite. This isn't one where they started with the existing zoning ordinance and just redlined a few, you know, paragraphs or, you know, sentences here or there. They shredded the existing one and built it from scratch to conform with our master plan.
All right, if we don't have any other questions, I would like to schedule the hearing. Do we have to have a motion on that?
Yes.
So if somebody can have a motion to schedule the public hearing for July fourteenth.
I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for July fourteenth.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to our first public comment. So if you have any public comment for items not on the agenda, typically, you can come up to the microphone, state your address, and you'll have three minutes to make them. Usually if you just say like what township or something's fine as well. Cheshire, okay. Again, normally it would come in as a written petition. Let me see. Have you write up kind of what you're looking for? And then you can send that into our city manager, and then they can put it onto our agenda. You know, after you kind of write up a proposal, that's typically what we have, so.
Is your petition online or?
Normally it's just a letter that you write.
Anything I can do? Okay.
Yeah, it's a written petition to the city, and then it can be put on the agenda. And then we can decide on it. But yeah, usually you'd reach out to Joel. His email should be on our website as well.
Yeah.
Or you can call the office or stop into the office at any time if you have any questions on that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gavin Taylor. I also live in Cheshire Township. And I wanted to reiterate what was just said. I agree with that. And if what you mentioned, come back with a written petition, I believe you said? Okay, then we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have time. You didn't use your full three minutes anyway, so.
Because you threw me off with the petition thing. I was just going to state that the encouragement for that is in your two thousand twenty-three master plan under RACE, one of the paragraphs was in the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, which is the SWOT analysis, completed as part of the City of Aligan Economic Developmental Plan. A lack of racial and cultural diversity within the city was listed as a weakness. Without a diverse backgrounds and progress, the data presented in the table two point oh three, which is in your guys' plan, suggests that the city may be slowly attracting the type of dynamic social composition deemed a necessity to combat a community of weakness. So this would be encouraging the diversity and the culture. But I'll submit the petition.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Beltman, District Fore Commissioner. Just wanted to come to make sure you guys are all aware and the public is aware. I know there's been a lot of discussion over the last few years on the county overflow parking lot, right, right over here. And I know it would certainly benefit the city to get that back on the tax rolls. It's on our agenda for this Thursday's county commissioner meeting to discuss selling it. Right now, I, I can speak for myself as a commissioner. I'm on the mindset to put it up for sale to the highest bidder. If anybody is opposed to that or has some compelling evidence to change my mind, please talk to me before Thursday. Because it is going to be a discussion item, and I think we'll move forward with it as a, as a commission. And you can, you know, think that over and give me a call, write me an email, or anybody that you talk to, if they have any better plans for that parking lot than just selling it to the highest bidder, and hopefully it gets developed either for a parking ramp, for housing, for housing with parking underneath it, whatever it may be. But to get generating some money for the city with that parking lot, so, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I don't see anybody else for a public comment. We'll move on to reports from boards and commissioners. Eleven A. Eleven A one, review of the June twenty twenty-five downtown development authority minutes.
Yeah, I'll handle this one since the mayor is absent, and she was in attendance at that meeting. We just had our last project updates for the Hubbard Street Parking Lot Reconstruction Project and the Water Street Parking Lot Project, as well as the Mayhem Park Improvement Project. So we went over those for the last time. It's been a standing agenda item for some time. We are moving forward with our parking lot identifiers as part of our first phase of the city-wide wayfinding signage program. So the DDA got an update on that. And we also just kind of had the initial conversation regarding the update to our master plan. The last time we redid our DDA master plan was in twenty twenty. We're coming up on five years, and so we will have a new master plan for this council's hopeful adoption by the end of the year.
All right, then we'll move on to eleven A two, review of the June twenty twenty-five Public Space Commission's meeting minutes.
I will also cover that because Councilmember Canales was not present at that meeting. We, this is our first meeting. We've moved up from six thirty to six o'clock. The commission voted to start an hour earlier, so that'll be posted as six o'clock. Again, we just had our standing agenda item of the Mayhem Park Project. We also discussed the potential for a pollinator garden at the Aligan Sports Complex in the unused practice football field, we'll call it, and it's kind of like up above the other football fields there in the area, and the potential partnership with the Aligan Rotary Club and their interest in wanting to get involved in a, in a community way. We are, we've accepted, I think, four different quotes on the restoration of the Arbor Street entrance to Oakwood Cemetery. There are a couple of, a handful of columns and wrought iron fencing at that entrance that are over a hundred years old and definitely need some love and care. It's been something that this board has been very passionate about. And our Assistant Director of the DPW, Jeff Maury, was able to obtain four different quotes that we are confident we can select one that can perform the work. So that'll be in front of you folks soon. And then we discussed the Girl Scout property development that we're discussing further this evening. And I rock the block event to take place in September, kind of a community cleanup through the Rossman Park Esplanade neighborhood there on M eighty-nine Marshall Street.
We'll move on to eleven A three, review of the June twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Thank you. We ended the public hearing in the review of the city draft zoning ordinance and a brief discussion on finalizing the zoning map with the amendments, which we kind of touched on that earlier. And then discussed the elegant township master plan that the township's working on. The planning commission is further discussing recommendations with a subcommittee for housing zoning to the township for zoning near the city limits. So looking at options, can recommend options for flexible housing, accessory dwellings, and other housing possibilities to encourage more development along the city limits. That was about it.
All right, then we'll move on to public safety, eleven B one, request to approve PO twenty-five zero eight two one for Axon Enterprise for the purchase of nine body cameras and four in-car cameras in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. Is Jay, are you presenting on this or?
Jay is.
Do we have any questions or you just want me to give you a brief? So the, the big topic I'm guessing is going to be the difference in price between WatchGuard and Axon. If we go forward with the Axon, before July first, we get twenty-five hundred dollars off the purchase. So we're looking at approximately a fourteen thousand dollar difference between the two over five years. We already have an Axon product that we carry, which is the Taser. So which gives us potential for some bundle options in the future. They tried to bundle this time and have us buy all Tasers as well, and I didn't want to do that. We didn't need them. There will be a point eventually, I'm sure, where they will say that ours aren't serviceable anymore, or they won't back them. But that's not the case right now, so we don't, we didn't want to do that. The Axon, a lot of, in this realm, I lean on Officer Morgan quite a lot because he is very technically savvy for us. He does all of our evidentiary stuff. He built our hard drives. I mean, Carl, you've talked to him about, so he, he says that this is a, a better product. I would agree. The Sheriff's Department has them as well. We can digitally send our videos to the county because they already have a portal set up. The amount of time, I think, Mike and Peter, you've been on council where we've had approved where we're going to have redaction technology, and we just never spent it because I kind of saw that potentially we would go away from that. So I didn't want to spend twelve, fourteen thousand dollars on WatchGuard redaction software if I thought that we were going to go this direction. Motorola took over WatchGuard in the middle of our cycle. The customer service has not been great. I could go into the weeds a little bit on that, but Motorola also makes our radios that we've been putting money away every year for. And they have changed timelines on us, and what we would and would not have to replace has changed. And it's, I'm on the nine-one-one policy board. I'm the local chief representative for all the chiefs in the county. And so we've made a subcommittee on that, and we're pretty frustrated with that. Like I said, that could be a long topic. I mean, it's, we've been reviewing radios and just haven't been pleased with the Motorola side of this product. We got it, as soon as I became chief, we got body cameras. They've worked well. They're at end-of-cycle. And the features, I mean, there's always technology and features that are changing. Some of the features on this product are if, let's say Officer Morgan's on a call and he's not answering his radio, I can key right into his body camera and look and see if he's okay, what he's doing. Super, super nice. And it's just, we just need an upgrade. They give us a, a refresh at two and a half years. And then I know why they give us a refresh at five because then you're going to sign another five-year contract potentially with them, so. WatchGuard gets a refresh, I think, on their two and a half. It was wrong. I gave Joel poor information. I thought it was four body cameras. Councilmember Walker called and asked me about it. They had the other five in a different line item, and so I didn't see that, and so that was not accurate. They're both would be for nine body cameras, and they both would be for four in-car cameras. So that was inaccurate on my part. So again, it comes down to, you know, a three thousand dollar a year difference for a product that we deem to be better. And in the future, like I said, hopefully we can get some savings as well by bundling. You know, if you already have a product that you can bundle with, which is our Tasers, I think that that would be smart because we're just not, we just aren't going to have really anything that is Motorola-based. Especially if, and again, for a future discussion, but the subcommittee, what we looked at, we, Joel and I have been talking with Tracy about how much money we need to put away. Well, then they cut three years off of how long it was going to be. Well, that's substantial when you're trying to save money for a, a larger purchase, and you think you're doing your due diligence to have it. So you have that nest egg there. You're not going to spend as much. But the product that we're starting to look at with a lot of the other locals was a Kenwood, and it's nearly two thousand dollars a radio cheaper. And everybody's saying that the products, you know, you're not losing on your product. So any questions I can try to clear up? I know that there was some concern about the difference in price. And I, you know, I recognize that, but I, I don't think three thousand dollars a year is.
So it was a total of three thousand a year, but this comes with the redaction software, so it'll take less time.
And not the, the other wood too.
The other wood now as well?
Yep. But this, this software, Josh has looked at it all. He spends an inordinate amount of time redacting video because the current court rules are making us turn video over at the district court level for all of our cases, opposed where a lot of courts will wait till the circuit court level to see if it even, I would have bet that ninety-eight percent of our videos never get looked at. That might be a bit much, but it's a lot of work for what actually happens. And now with this software, he can, say, Councilmember Hooker was in the video, he could point on her face and then follow her for the whole video. Whereas now, he's having to do it manually. And we knew this was an issue, but again, we, we saw that maybe we weren't going to stick with WatchGuard potentially, and I didn't want to spend money on software we're only going to use for a year or two. And Josh agreed. I mean, but this, this will save him a bunch of time. Great product, good features, good safety features. And they, they are invaluable for us on the road to be able to show our actions and what we've done.
After five years, then?
You'd have to decide if you're going to do another five-year contract. I'm guessing would be what it is. Before you just have, when we first started this back in two thousand, excuse me, two thousand nineteen, that was one of the first things that Joel and I talked about when I got promoted. We wanted body cameras. We did it. I don't think Axon at that time, if they had one, they were very early in the process of developing it.
Axon has had body cameras a long time.
Have they?
Yeah. They've been one of the major brands. But Motorola taking over the other brand actually makes it a little more concerned to me because Motorola as a company is very small compared to what they used to be back in their heyday. And that's why I could see why we're, they moved up their time schedules and things like that. They, they built good hardware that was rugged, but their software side and some of their other stuff is not great.
I mean, that's accurate. I mean, the radios have been good. That was, that was one of the reasons I was, you know, but, so the, the kind of the straw that broke the camel's back is they told me in the subcommittee that there are mobile radios weren't going to be affected, that we wouldn't need to do that. And then the next subcommittee meeting that I had, they changed it, and I was like, okay, you know, like.
Any other questions from any other council members? So can I get a motion to approve the PO?
Make a motion to approve the purchase order for Axon, the system.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Moving on to eleven D, Public Works. Request to approve PO twenty-six zero eight one nine and a budget adjustment to Consumers Energy for an underground electric service in the Hubbard Street Parking Lot in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So in front of you is a request that we begin a two-step process to lower the lines or a majority of the lines that crisscross the Hubbard Street Parking Lot. This was part of the plan that was approved by council earlier. It said lines be lowered at a future date. We're at that future date. We have to first work with consumers on the design and the payment for them to do it. Then we have to hire a private electrician to redo the electrical services onto the buildings. This is a similar process we did with Cutler Street Parking Lot across the street here when they had lines that crisscross. This will not address the three high transmission lines that you can see at the very top of the screen. They're the very, very thin ones. It will cover the dark, thick, black ones that go east and west over that lot. It will not address the lines that go north, south, along the walkway behind the buildings that front Locust either. But this will start the process of cleaning up that lot and making it a lot more attractive and safety for when we have events in that parking lot or when it's really windy. Any questions?
Did you have an estimated cost on the second half of this project?
Not available for me right now.
Like, not even an estimate?
Not even an estimate.
This isn't something that needs to be chosen today? We could wait for you to get the estimate on that so we know the total project cost?
That's what I was kind of leaning towards too.
I would recommend that we move forward with this now, and then we can get this process going. Eventually, we're going to have to pay for it one way or the other.
That's if we want to underground them, but that's why I want to know total project cost personally before I would pull the trigger on the first part.
From Wyndham Mueller?
Yeah, from the electricians to, that way we have a total package cost and we know.
Yeah, because Wyndham Mueller is going to update the estimate that they gave Doug. Now, I don't have that in my email right now. I think he's still waiting since he did it. So if you guys want to, we can go ahead and just postpone this to the next meeting if you'd like to wait for the total estimate.
Yeah.
Can I ask what the threshold of pain would be for Councilmember Walker? If it comes in at ten thousand, is that too much?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so then it's going to be too much. You can't, I wonder if you've ever done the electrical work. You can't lower power lines for under ten grand.
Well, I understand that, but can you explain Wyndham Mueller's, in the description was just joints. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so the electrical services, where you have your meter that goes into your structure, right now they're all being top-fed. Now they have to become bottom-fed. So you have to redo all of that electrical service. That's what we did across the alleyway. What we did for the building that your family currently owns on Hubbard, received that as well, so.
Consumers, from what I'm reading, the consumers proposals just for the underground conduits across the parking lot, but then there still has to be the connections to each building.
The conduits are in the ground right now. We did that as part of the parking lot construction.
They got to pull the wire.
This is consumers lowering the line and throwing, and putting the lines in the ground.
Also, Wyndham Mueller has to run the lines. No.
They have to put in the service meters. Consumers does not do private work.
Well, what kind of threshold should we be at?
I don't know that answer. I was just curious what yours might be for Mayor Protem.
I'm the wrong person to ask.
Yeah.
I'd just like to know total project cost before I approve the first step because once we do the first step, we're, we're in for it at that point to, we're required kind of to do the second step. And I prefer just to know cost upfront.
How long is a quote valid for?
This consumer's quote, let's see what, if we have that in the report here. So the, on page one ninety-one of your packet. So the, on page one ninety-one of your packet. I am not seeing a, what consumers gave us as a deadline on that quote yet. So, Consumers is good to work with, they enjoy working with the city on these kind of projects, so. I think, I think we are, we are fine within our timeframe with them, Councilmember Westover.
Joel also, even though there's three addresses on Chestnut that are affected.
Yep.
They only have an agreement for the Eagles?
No, it's one, the service addresses, so on page two oh five, you can see the service addresses were one oh eight, one ten, one fourteen Chestnut, and two eleven, two twenty-one Trowbridge. So two eleven is owned by Eddie Keonis Walker. It's the building that's right next to City Hall. And then the building across the street is owned by the city, that's the Regent Theater. And we have a street light that's there right now that we're going to drop, and it's going to go to our new street light that, that base is in right now.
Yeah, but the purchase agreement, the only one here is for the Elks, is that just an example of what everyone will have, or?
Yeah, that's an example of what everyone will have.
Okay. I didn't, I wondered if that was a different setup, or?
Nope.
Okay.
So if you want, you can just make a motion to postpone this to July fourteenth.
I'll make a motion to postpone the budget adjustment for consumers until July fourteenth.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On to item eleven D two, request to receive a report on the potential grant for safe street planning.
So we were made aware of a grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation to fund a comprehensive safety action plan for all city streets. It's a three hundred thousand dollar project, the grant is two hundred and forty thousand, the city would have to match sixty thousand dollars over a three-year period. Prior to applying for any implementation funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation, you have to have this completed first. So when you look at pedestrian safety alone, Councilmember Walker and Hooker, you have had your coffee with the residents, and you both have sent me emails about residents that have approached you and said, fix the Tressel Trail Bridge, period. You cannot apply for funding to fix the Tressel Trail Bridge until you do this kind of safety analysis. Two twenty-two over the Kalamazoo River. Last year, I had the experience of walking with the classes from Little Tigers, because they were complaining about when they have field trips to J.C. Park with the Tressel Trail Bridge being closed. They're like, why don't you walk it and see how you enjoy trying to herd thirty-five-year-olds along the side of two twenty-two, where we don't have a sidewalk. Before we can approach the state to say, hey, we need to create a pedestrian crossing at that location, we're going to have to do this. So I've gone ahead and I pulled the trigger to submit that application ahead of the timeframe, the deadline to get this in. We will know later this fall, if we're successful, if we're successful, I will be coming back to council requesting, you know, the sixty thousand dollar match in the upcoming budgets. I'm just making you aware of, you know, what I've done, it falls within council's goals of infrastructure planning and work like that. It does not require council approval to apply for the grant, so. Some grants require you guys to pass resolutions, this one does not.
All right. And then we'll move on to eleven E one, request to approve accounts payable and payroll.
We have, payroll, it's been requested to approve the payroll, I'm sorry, accounts payable in the amount of three hundred forty-three thousand six thirty-six and thirteen cents. And then payroll in a total amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-two cents. Total disbursement, four hundred sixty-five thousand five sixteen and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve. You have to say that.
Do that, okay. I make a motion, or I'd make, okay, good, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. On to item eleven E two, request to adopt resolution twenty-five dot eighteen to transfer the Oprah certificate for one thirty-two Hubbard Street from One Enterprise to Lexam Holdings LLC.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is a simple resolution. Back in twenty twenty-two, the city of Alligan adopted resolution twenty-two point two-four, which approved an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for this address, one thirty-two Hubbard Street, it was vacant at the time. One Enterprises, working with the tenant Herrenmark, rehabbed the inside, brought life to this building. And now One Enterprises has sold it to Lexamarie Holdings LLC, and we need to transfer the ownership of that certificate. So the state of Michigan knows who to send the tax bills to. Any questions from, for staff? You've done this twice now, this will be the second time that you've done the transfer of an Oprah in the past seven years since we've started doing Oprahs.
If there's no questions, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to transfer the Oprah to, I'm sorry.
You can just say resolution twenty-five dot eighteen.
Sure, resolution twenty-five dot eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And passes. On to eleven E three, request to adopt resolution twenty-five dot nineteen, approving a wage increase for non-union employees for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
I have to abstain from this vote, I have a family member who works for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Canales. Each year, the city of Alligan does a cost of living adjustment for our non-union employees. Union employees' cost of living adjustments are stipulated and they're negotiated and agreed upon contracts. The cost of living adjustment between non-union employees and union employees is always the same since I've been here. So we are recommending that non-union employees receive a four percent raise, similar to the union employees, and that that raise starts on July first, twenty twenty-six, similar to the union employees. Any questions for staff?
And Joel, we already accounted for this in the budget, correct?
That is correct, thank you for asking.
There's no other questions, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five nineteen.
Second.
All day, all right, all those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. On to eleven E five. Nope, nope, sorry, eleven E four. Request to adopt resolution twenty-five dot two-zero to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five fourth quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, as council is aware, you do budget adjustments four times a year. You do first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and then we have to do fourth quarter. Our fourth quarter ends on July, or on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Our finance director has to have the authority to make those adjustments after the end of June thirtieth. So our fiscal year budget ends in what's called a balanced state. So what you're doing is you're authorizing the finance director through this resolution to make those budget adjustments. Those budget adjustments that she makes will be presented to city council as part of the audit review.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five twenty.
All right. All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes. On to eleven E five. Request to schedule a public hearing and approval of resolution twenty-five dot twenty-one regarding the sale of city-owned land near Sherman Street and one hundred fifteenth street intersection to Western Ave Holdings LLC for ten dollars and vacate the old right-of-way in the general area.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, we're going to go ahead and correct the agenda title, it's not a request to schedule a public hearing. It is a public hearing that's stated in the report that was in the packet. So we discussed this project at a previous meeting. Western Avenue Holdings is a development company, they are looking to redevelop what's commonly known as the Bowling Alley property between Sherman Street, Goodwin, and one hundred and fifteenth Avenue, or Western Avenue, as it's known in the city, for that little angled park, piece of road right there. Tonight, we have to have a public hearing on the sale per the city charter. So I can just explain once again for people in the audience what we're doing, thanks, Parker. So several years ago, Sherman Street used to go straight north, south into M eighty-nine. And then it ended and the city got together and said, well, let's go ahead and let's make it a little safer intersection, and they bent the road this way, they bent Sherman Street this way. When they did that, they did not relocate the Sherman Street right away. They just put Sherman Street on top of a city-owned parcel. That created this gigantic parcel, which is identified as parcel C and parcel B. And they have the Sherman Street right-of-way, which is identified as parcel A. Right now, the Sherman parcel A is best described as the gravel parking area completely tied up adjacent to the Bowling Alley structure. So, the person that owns this building wants to do this development. They want to remove the Bowling Alley structure, build an outbuilding right here, that's three thousand square feet, and then a strip mall. And by an outbuilding, it's going to be two drive-through facilities, and then the strip mall here. However, to make this work, they would need the right-of-way vacated. And then they would need this parcel here, which is parcel B, to be sold to them. It's that parcel right there. So tonight, what you're being asked to do is to have the public hearing and then approve resolution twenty-five twenty-one, which was in your packet. Twenty-five twenty-one covers both the sale and the vacation on how this would work. So, what we're looking at tonight is for the Mayor Protem to open the floor to receive comments on this. And then, as well as after that, for council to go ahead and adopt this resolution. Once this is done, the developer will still have to go through the planning commission to receive site plan approval, because it's new construction, and you have to have site plan approval for new construction. And then we'll move forward with seeing this redeveloped and brought into the city. Any questions for staff about the process?
There's no questions, and I will.
I'm sorry, not necessarily about the process, but just one question, if, if this, this developer does not get financed for putting the buildings out, what, is there a provision in there where the city would get the property back and the vacation would go away? How does that work?
The quick answer and the short answer and the appropriate answer is no. So if something happens where the developer does not get the financing, what we have then, what we have then created is an actual parcel here that you can develop it. The fact that we have a right-of-way that is three inches from a building makes no sense, a commercial building. That isn't a sidewalk, it's not in a downtown setting, it's in a highway commercial area, makes no sense. Moving, moving forward with this, getting rid of parcel A and parcel B as seen on the map, and combining that with what's known as Lot Four, as you can see, just to the left of parcel A, is good planning. We are designing the earth to develop appropriately. And it becomes taxpaying.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Assuming we're selling them parcel B before we vacate the property parcel A. Because otherwise, it would split between us. When you vacate a right-of-way, it splits between the neighboring property, so I'm assuming.
Correct, yeah, so when you read the resolution, now therefore be it resolved as follows, item number two, upon the completion of the closing described in the purchase agreement, the city vacates and abandons its interest. So we're not going to vacate and abandon, I mean, the way this is written is it doesn't go into effect until the closing happens.
Yeah, because, because otherwise it would, half of it would come back to the city.
To the city, correct, yeah. The city attorney and I had that conversation, and we made sure we put provisions in there that didn't make us have egg on our face.
Any other, otherwise I will open up the public hearing at six forty-eight. Anybody has any questions in the audience, or public comment on it?
My name's Chris Goodman, five eighteen Hubbard Street. I've been watching online, haven't come down for any meetings yet. Just a quick question, I don't know how this works, but I've seen online different properties selling for a dollar, different properties for a hundred thousand dollars. Where do we come up with this number for the dollars for this property that I want to buy? I mean, maybe I'm just wondering where these numbers come in effect? They want to build the property, why not charge five? But properties actually
usually don't respond back, but we'll probably bring that up after any other comments. Because then we'll have discussion after public comment. Any other public comment? If not, I'll close the, the hearing at six fifty. Okay, do we have any discussion on that? I could probably, a couple of things, the property value on that is, from my viewpoint, isn't really worth anything, it's not a buildable property. And the right-of-way is technically kind of their property, not their property, it gets kind of weird on right-of-ways. So it's, there's not a whole lot of value I see in that little parcel B, other than our continued maintenance of it if we retain it.
Two things, Mayor Protem, the prevailing opinion in the state of Michigan is municipalities cannot sell right-of-ways. You can only vacate.
You can only vacate, yes.
Correct. The little triangle parcel B, quick calculation on our mapping system we have at the city of Alligan, it's about seventy-five hundred square feet. It is undevelopable, as is. You can't put anything there, it's only worth value if it's connected to that larger Bowling Alley property and that vacant property. It has no value to the city of Alligan, as it states, so.
And the sidewalks, wasn't that part of our safe walking, so I believe the sidewalks are on?
So the sidewalks that are there right now, we don't have, I'm looking at the aerial photo, we have sidewalks on the north side of one hundred and fifteenth that the children walk on. We don't have sidewalks based off this aerial photo. It hugs the road. Those sidewalks would stay there as well. You covering that? We're both moving the mouse the same way, I have my mouse on my computer. So that is going to stay there. This is a conceptual plan, showing additional sidewalk. We're both moving the mouse the same way. I have my mouse on my computer. So that, that is gonna stay there. Uh, this is a conceptual plan showing additional sidewalk that's right there right now, that we're gonna show, we're requiring them also to put in what's called internal connectors. So there'll be sidewalks that come in off Sherman Street into the commercial development, plus sidewalks coming off one hundred and fifteenth into the commercial development. Walkability per our master plan is something we strive for. That's one reason why our, you know, zoning awards, you know, got flexible with housing design and development and location. We want to increase the walkability of the city of Alleghen. So... Yeah, those would be the two answers I have for council.
Yeah, I remember there was none up there, and I was just looking. There's none on the south side currently sidewalks. So actually, going by this rendering, it would actually add additional sidewalks. When we did the safe-walking program, it was only on that north side.
Yeah, it, it's still a little...
Safe school route.
Bit mishap there, correct. So yeah, staff's recommending that council, you know, that you move forward and you adopt resolution twenty-five twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
All right, all those in favor, signal with aye. Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passes. On to eleven E six. Request to approve PO twenty-six dash zero eight two zero to Von's Lawn and Garden in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents for the purchase of a Landmaster AMP UTV with a snowplow.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. In your budget, you set aside money out of the DDA funds to replace the current golf cart with a new UTV. This UTV will have a snowplow installed on it. So during the winter months, we are able to clear crosswalks downtown when it snows all day long, and our contractor cannot get back in town to address the snow in the crosswalks. This is an electric UTV. The city requires an electric UTV to the, due to the fact that we park it at our city hall garage, and we cannot have a combustible engine gasoline storage in our garage. So we have to go with this kind of a design. That's why we went with the golf cart before as well. Staff did several reviews when they looked at other things. Bobcat does not make an electric version. You know, this was the best thing we could find. They are manufactured in America, and there is a service dealer here in the greater Alleghen area on M eighty-nine. So we're comfortable moving forward with this recommendation.
All right, I had a, I had a couple of questions myself. Um, I see it was talking for removing of snow in the downtown. However, our ordinances say we're supposed to remove our own snow. Are we ever gonna address how this costing's going? I think technically our ordinance changed that we were not required even at the household level.
Correct.
We used to have that we were, but...
Yeah. So in the city of Alleghen, we do have ordinances that say, you know, the residents are responsible for certain things, but the city doesn't. Uh, the landscaping all along two twenty-two. In front of Shell, Village Market, the Perrigo property, which is adjacent to the police station, the Old Ace Hardware, Wanlin. Private property owners are responsible for maintaining that. When we get to about middle of July, you'll see DP, DPW staff in there weeding that and pulling those weeds. The bump out at the bottom of Water Tower Hill. The city regularly mows that, picking up branches at, you know, in the curb lawn. The city regularly, you know, picks up branches at private residence houses. There has been discussion at the DDA level. There's been discussion at the downtown low-down meetings about our downtown property owners picking up or shouldering more of the cost of the public parking lots we provide, the sidewalk maintenance we provide, the marketing we provide them. However, I will say that does not go over well. I become the public enemy number one very quickly in those meetings. I think Mayor Pro Tem, you're at one of the DDA meetings when I brought that up, and there is some cross eyes being given at me.
I brought it up when we had to do the downtown, and it was way over budget.
Yep. It's still not well-received by your downtown merchants. I'm gonna let you know that.
I'm, I'm affected by it myself.
Understood. You own property downtown. Moving forward, though, this serves a purpose for all of the events. You will see that golf cart out tonight that we have right now, um, picking up the traffic barriers. They go out in the morning. We pick them up afterwards for pork in the road. You will see them every Friday night for rolling on the river during our setup. You'll see them for our Saturday events when we're out and about. That golf cart, the wheels are, the tires are becoming bald, the alignment of it. It shakes nonstop when we drive it. It has seen its better days, and we're very thankful that Von's Lawn is gonna give us one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as a trade-in for that, you know, for this, uh, the purchase of this. So this, this is something that we do need. It's a little more oomph, which will be helpful for us. Uh, we read the reviews on the snow plowing capability of it and being able to just clear the intersections. So yeah, they have to clear the sidewalks. But the number one complaint I get in the summertime is from a couple store owners saying, Joel, you want the town to be walkable, but the, the crosswalks are full of snow. And so now we have Ryan Berza, who is our downtown community service technician slash AV slash computer tech slash phone tech. He now goes out and, you know, snow blows those or shovels those crosswalks as much as possible. This will make it much more efficient.
On that note, will we continue contracting for that snow removal on the sidewalks downtown?
Contracting for snow removal is in the budget for this upcoming year. It was a three-year contract, I believe, that we signed with Westling Services. Council, you revisit those contracts every time they come up, and so we will revisit that with council when that comes up.
Those are my only questions. Any other questions? If there's none, can I get a motion to approve PO twenty-six dash zero eight two zero?
I make a motion to approve the purchase order as stated.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, signal with aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Eleven E seven, request to approve an insurance counseling service agreement for the amount of four thousand five hundred with Phil Sigler of Barts Remory Agency to serve as a city of Alleghen insurance consultant.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, at the end of the fiscal year where we are right now, we have to re-up our insurance for the upcoming fiscal year. Barts Remory, Phil Sigler is our insurance counselor or our consultant for us that handles our insurance. Um, he doesn't just go out and get our annual renewals for us, but he also responds to all claims against the city. He advises the city. He's the go-between person for the city of Alleghen and Tokyo Marine, who is our insurance carrier historically. So for that service, we contract with him. It's four thousand five hundred dollars. It's been four thousand five hundred dollars for several years now.
Is there any questions on this?
I just want, I'd like to make one statement that, uh, the way this was presented with, uh, Michigan Municipal League, their options, and the Tokyo Marine...
We're not there yet. That's the next agenda item.
Oh, geez.
That's okay.
Oh, well, anyway. Okay.
I don't wanna see what you're thundering at.
It's all insurance.
Yeah, it, it, kind of. This is our consultant person.
All right, all right, all right, forget it.
One of the things I wanted to note, uh, that I don't think Joel addressed was that he does not get any, um, commission. This is a flat fee, correct?
Correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
No other discussion? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the insurance counseling service agreement fee.
Second.
All those in favor, signal with aye. Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Now on to eleven E eight. Request to approve the renewal of various insurance policies for the city of Alleghen and authorize the payment of the related invoices totaling two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and two hundred and twenty forty-three dollars.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So our annual payment to cover the city and all of its apparatuses is two hundred and twelve thousand forty-three dollars each, uh, for fiscal year twenty-six. That starts July first. Um, I will note that this is ten thousand dollars, six hundred and forty, ten thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars less than last year, which is a surprise to us. I will note that in my report, I mentioned that the deductibles stayed the same. Actually, one of them went down, because it was cheaper if we, our deductible went down, which I don't understand because of my personal insurance. If I wanna save money on insurance, my deductible always has to go up. But we're thankful for that. Municipal insurance is a little different than personal insurance. Um, we did secure a bid from MML, but we found a bid to be lacking in several areas. So we decided to go with, you know, stay with the team we work with right now with Tokyo Marine. Any questions for staff?
No, I just have the statement that, um, I was, was not aware of all the policies needed and the depth that we have to go. And that it was laid out really well to compare the two. So that was good.
And all credit goes to Phil. Phil does all that. I mean, he sits down with me, Tracy usually, but she's been on vacation. Uh, he sits down and goes line item by line item and gives us, you know, ample time to review and ask questions, and he is very, he takes his time to make sure we know what we're getting into.
No other questions? Can I get a motion for the insurance?
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of all the insurance policies.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by aye. Aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Okay, on to eleven E nine. Approval of the purchase and development agreement to sell city parcel zero three fifty-one two three five zero zero four dash zero zero and zero three fifty-one dash two hundred zero one six dash zero zero to the Alleghen Development Company for the sale price of a hundred thousand dollars. This is commonly known as the Girl Scout property.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, this item was postponed to this meeting. We had the public hearing at the last meeting, uh, but we postponed action on the approving the purchase agreement until the developer and the city had more time to work out some kinks. And we, uh, were working on it even yet this afternoon. So in front of you is a hard copy that is different from what was in the packet. I'm gonna go over some of those changes that we agreed to from their, their attorney. Um, it was mostly, in my opinion, some semantics, uh, adding, you know, that they are a limited liability corporation in the first paragraph, uh, adding phrases like as further described in paragraph two below, adding subject to adjustments provided herein. Really, you know, again, I'm gonna use the word semantics that we did there. We added stuff that the buyer's project shall be amended without further written agreement of the parties to conform with any site plans or approvals obtained by the municipality. So what you're approving tonight is the design, what you're seeing on the screen. You have a planning commission. You have two representatives on that planning commission. If the planning commission says, you know, those townhomes that you have on the bottom side, you should shift those ten feet to the north. They don't have to come back to city council to amend this agreement to shift that ten feet to the north. Your planning commission has that authority to do that review, that kind of discussion. But the majority of it stays the same of we're getting, you know, we're gonna receive a hundred thousand dollars for the sale of this property. Uh, and part of that is they are gonna donate the lower level to the Alleghen Conservation District for a learning lab. Any questions for staff regarding this?
There's one item I do want better understanding.
Sure.
Not necessarily the staff, but whatever. Uh, I still do not have a good understanding of how the traffic will flow on Walcott and, and the other streets.
Okay, so in the, in the, in the packet, you received a report from, or a communication from Tim Drews, who's a professional traffic engineer. And so...
But again, I guess my point is, is it going to be two-way traffic down Walcott? Is it going to be two-way?
Yeah, all, all those, all those roads are two-way traffic except for the private road that the city paid to pave, and the city pays the snowplow. So...
I just do not see the space for two-way traffic on Walcott.
Okay, yeah, then you're, you're, then what it is, is you're disagreeing with our professional traffic engineer that the city contracts with. Cause it, and his report was the space is there.
Oh, I'm sure. It's probably fine if they take, the land is there.
No. The, the road width can handle cars each way. It handles cars two ways right now.
Seriously?
Yeah. It's twenty feet wide. The average American vehicle is about six feet wide. Yeah, six to eight, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem.
Compared to the streets that I've gone down in foreign countries, that's actually quite wide.
Yeah. So... Yeah, so we're not widening the roads in this neighborhood. You know, there, there's already residential houses out there where you have two-way traffic.
I usually find if you widen the road, it actually increases traffic speed. So most of the time, you don't wanna have a wider road. It would just cause more issues of traffic.
A real-life example of that is if you're ever driving to Hamilton, and it goes to four lanes for the passing lane, and you're stuck behind someone doing fifty-three, all of a sudden, they're doing fifty-nine. And you're like, seriously?
Same as out in front of Marshall when they changed it from two lanes going up to putting the turn lane in. So it's single lanes. That slowed down the traffic on Marshall.
Yep. There's enough studies in the world about traffic planning that shows you want narrow roads to slow it down. Then one way to traffic calm.
To kinda match your, your speed limit and what's expected.
Yep.
If you got a really wide road, people feel more safe to go faster. That's not what we want in a residential area like this.
I'm glad that road will stay the same.
Any other questions from council? Otherwise, I would open it up to public comment. There's no other questions? If anybody in the public has any comments on this?
Yeah, you do, unfortunately.
Yeah, Matthew Pivoar, three twenty-nine Monroe. But I'm also the trustee of the property owner of their home. A road that goes through there. Um, when the road was put through, we gave temporary permission to put the sewer line through. We did not hook into the sewer line, and we did not relinquish ownership of both sides of that road. Don't believe the other property owner next to us or around the corner did as well. So it is still a private road. And it will be maintained as a private road, and it will not be accessed allowed for the... I've unfortunately not even attended the last meeting, but a lot of people have come. They just still don't understand how to move from one developer and one plan to another developer and another plan without allowing the public to make a bid on the property. Seems like it's done some closed deal, buying closed doors, even though citizens of the city came to prior meetings and expressed an interest in buying the property. So I know a lot of people would like to know how the new developer company was selected, and under what regulation and ordinance they're allowed to pick them without giving the general public a... Just as we heard from the county tonight, the parking lot is going to the highest bidder. Why is this property not going to be, or the best development? We know from at least two meetings that somebody said they were interested in this property publicly. That was a, a concern of a lot of people. They just don't understand how to transition from one project and one developer to another project and another developer. And we only found out about it after the due diligence period was approved. And nobody was given an opportunity to comment or to make a bid. And I only point out that the original development was approved by the prior council. It's very different now, and the development is completely different. That will be a number of resolutions to do developer moving the, um, the original period.
Davis Garden, three hundred Riverside Drive. My property is in this neighborhood. And I guess sometimes I don't understand the deal. I haven't heard council. I also. Different now. And get, I understand the bottom, the bottom of the house. And so that after that, I get, I don't know why none of this stuff was ever happened. And just on the side note, I have a child who didn't have access to any car. That's why I work. And I was also, I knew the smell out of that. So I'm now, I'm actually just still go sell and change it in. So I was very much part of, of my life. But, um, I, I was just low, hold out on the private road path because I knew that a developer was going to come in. He's going to come someday and I didn't watch the traffic too there, so I had a lot. And I was assured that that road would not be used as that.
No other public comment from the audience? Then I will put it back to council if you have any other discussion or if you want to make a motion. Any discussion amongst council? Any questions, concerns? Things that you need to, a better understanding of? Right then, any motion to approve the purchase and development agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and development agreement to sell the city-owned parcels to the Alligan Development Company for one hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor, signal with aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to eleven E ten, review of Bridge Fest twenty-twenty-five report.
Sure, this is just a recap of the event that happened on the second Saturday of June. We estimated around two thousand people at the day-long event. Everything kind of kicks off at eleven AM and concludes at ten PM. The different attractions are listed there on the screen. The downtown Alligan and City of Alligan partnership hosts just a handful of these. But we've also got a lot of great community partnership to help build Bridge Fest up. The Friends of Alligan District Library and the folks at ADL sponsor the Inflatables each year as part of their launch to their summer reading kickoff program. We were privileged to partner with Broken Arrow this year to introduce a new attraction. We called it a Smash Station. It's my understanding that this was an attraction at Bridge Fest back in the day. And someone had brought it, the idea to me and I talked to Broken Arrow and they were willing to partner and bring a junk vehicle down and allow folks to pay some money to take some swings at it. It proved to be a hit. It was a lot of fun to watch that car kind of deteriorate throughout the day. And we had kids, adults, men, women, everybody was just taking swings at that thing. It was, it was fun to watch. And then the Eagles hosted a cornhole tournament. Brave Art Studio hosted a plain air painting on the river event. They've kind of explored that over the last few years during Roland on the River. And I approached them about incorporating that into Bridge Fest and that was a hit as well. Allowed for folks to just grab a canvas and paint at no charge. Walk up kids, people who'd never done anything like this before, just kind of taking their hand at painting. It was really neat. And then they also, Brave Art Studio, that is, also hosted what they called the Downtown Throwdown. It was an urban disc golf tournament that started at the Griswold and then traversed throughout the downtown area and ended up back there at the Griswold and they had over forty people participate in the very first one, which was really good. And we were quite happy for that. The Sassy Olive and Eccentric Garden hosted our art market. And our breweries, Tantric Brewing Company, Heron Mark and Shane Dorf Brewing Company hosted the second annual point-five K brew hop race where you start at one brewery and get to the next and to the next with a social district beverage. The total event cost was just over twenty-one thousand dollars. That does not include any of the costs associated with those attractions that I just listed that we considered in-kind donations from our business and community partners. And it also doesn't include any staff time. It's myself, Ryan Burza, Joel Die, and a handful of others. The revenue brought in was just over seven and a half thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars of that was from our event sponsors, Milbacher and Sons, Honor Credit Union and Cunningham, Cunningham-Dulman and Holland, a law firm. And just over four and a half thousand of that was from food sales and the attractions, which include the two carnival rides that we had and the Smash Station. Questions?
Parker, is that the food trucks, that's a percentage?
Yeah, thank you for asking. I can clarify on that. So the food trucks, they, in order to participate in our festival events, so that includes Bridge Fest, July through Jubilee and our New Year's Eve event, we require ten percent of their total sales.
Fortunately, I wasn't able to attend this year, but it sounds like it was a good time.
It was. We got a, a handful of really nice feedback from the community tents. And I just stopped this morning and told, or I was told that it was the, the best one they've been to. So that was kind of nice. But yeah, thank you for those council members that were able to be there and, and help out and work our community tent and the Smash Station. I know Councilmember Walker and Mayor Perrigo were able to attend that booth, so that was cool.
Then we'll move on to item twelve A, request to appoint Alex Wilken, Wilkenning to the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Yeah, just a quick note, our DDE board had a recent resignation from our chairperson, Mark Heather. As you saw in the DDA minutes, we selected a new chair and vice-chairperson at our last meeting, which opened up a vacancy with Mr. Heather's resignation. And Alex Wilkenning, who is a former downtown business owner and soon-to-be future downtown business owner and current downtown resident, applied for that vacancy. So we were happy to receive his application.
So can I get a motion to approve his appointment?
I'll make a motion to appoint Alex Wilkenning to the DDA.
Support.
All those in favor, signal with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. On to item thirteen, our second public comment period. So if there's anybody in the audience that has any public comments, you can come forward and have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll continue on to item fourteen, communication from the city manager. Do you have anything tonight?
We're in the throes of summer. Roland on the River had two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five people down there this past Friday. I see a couple of council members every once in a while. Be nice to see all of you. So come out and be part of the community.
All right, then we'll move on to item fifteen, roundtable discussion from council and mayor. Anybody have something to discuss tonight? Any? I just, I do it free form. Don't all jump at once.
I'll go ahead and begin. I want to understand last week, the food trucks, there was one set up in front of Minis at one o'clock?
Yeah, so our mobile food vendor ordinance allows for any mobile food vendor who is registered with the city. Requires a once annual ten dollar fee to operate within the city limits. And any food truck can come down and park in any available parallel parking spot that happens to be at least fifty feet away from the front door of an open brick and mortar restaurant. And as long as they've got their application turned in, that registration fee and their operations with the Alligan, or with their, wherever their county-based health department is, they are allowed to come down and operate in the city limits at any point in time.
I, I guess my concern is, what is the fee for them to set up?
Yep, it's a once annual ten dollar fee for all of our food trucks, aside from those festival events that I mentioned earlier.
Correct. So for ten dollars, a brick and mortar store is paying the city way more than that in taxes?
Sure, of these, the food truck events that we do, we have, I think at most, a food truck appears in downtown Alligan four times a year out of the three hundred and sixty-five days in a year.
Okay. And then, um, the holiday lighting group has met two times. Still waiting for a call from you, Parker.
Which holiday lighting group?
Chris Goodman, I brought it up a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, so Mike, I'm going to interject here. As I've mentioned to council many times, Parker works for me. I work for council. That's four of you. We do not take direction from one individual council member. If a council member calls me and says, Joel, go pick up the trash on, you know, Monroe Street, because it's my neighbor's property, I ain't going to do it. I'm going to wait for a direction from four. You did bring it up, but I didn't, and we said it's a good idea if a community group wants to do it, I think is what our response was. But we didn't hear direction from council saying, hey, we want the city staff to take this on as a project because we're going to start doing something here a little different. When you guys come up with a new program and a new project, I'm going to ask you to tell us what program or project you would like us to walk away from. We are not a fat organization. We are a lean organization. So that is a good idea. And if there's a community group like the Lions Club or the Rotary Club or the Masonic Temple wants to say, hey, we're going to take on this initiative as a way of giving back to the public or Alligan Speak Up, which we heard this evening, they came to speak. There's community groups, or the Alligan Arcade Club that, you know, edged most of the sidewalks in the city of Alligan four years ago. If there's community groups that want to take the lead on this, you'll have us cheering from the sidelines. But there is a lot of work that we have to do every day to keep the city just open and running. So if you have a question about staff responding, council members, you have to contact me directly. My staff does not work for the city council. I work for the city council. The police chief doesn't work for you. The finance director doesn't work for you. So please go through me if you have an issue.
Okay. So I guess I will make a motion that we create a committee for a holiday lighting contest in the city of Alligan.
I would need a little more detail because is this like, we're budgeting anything for this? Like, is there prizes?
Is, is this something that you and the people you're working with on could make a presentation at the next meeting? They could come and make a presentation, then we could all hear what we need, understand what it would cost, and then go ahead and make a motion on it?
Well, I guess we're looking to make a committee to come up with that.
I think what Joel's saying is we don't have the staff to, to do that. But if you could come up with the information, you know, you, you have people you're working with right now. Have one of them come in at our next meeting, do a presentation as to what exactly you need. And I'd be more than happy to support something like that.
Takes two members to put it on an agenda, right?
Takes two members to put on an agenda. He's made a motion. Is there a second? If it's, there is no second, then it would die for a lack of second. But is there any second for that motion?
A second to put it on the agenda?
No, second to his proposal. His proposal was to create a subcommittee, to create a committee on this. That's why I said I'd need more detail personally. But if there's a second, we can have a vote on it. If not, it would die for a lack of a second.
I think that this is more of a community-based thing, like in Papa, like the community group, like the people that you're working with, they organize it and then the city promotes it with them, you know, helps them promote it in like social media. But I think that that's just more something like a community group should be formed and do. I participate, but I think that.
I hear no second and I can say that this died for a lack of a second. But Mike, like I said, I, I think a good proposal, I just need more details. Like, I don't want to jump, like, that's very vague for me. I just need, like, as a council member said, a little bit more details, maybe a little, that's what we're thinking of.
How do we get? How do we get a new group going?
It's through community, because whenever the cities tried to do it, we end up with committees that don't have people on them because we're doing it, but you need, for something like that, I think you would have to have, get some community members together that want to do that, because you're going to need, of course, people to help plan it, promote it, all that type of stuff. But what you want the city to do with it, I'm not quite sure. That's where I don't know what, what you're wanting the city and the city staff to work on on it. Is it, and what type of budget? Are we spending money, are we not? Is it just a promotion of it? And this committee, this community group is doing this, and they just want us to post it on our social media and say, hey, there's a contest here, it's through these people?
In my hesitation, because, I mean, the city charter allows the city manager to partake in the discussion, and my job is to advise city council. My hesitation is that Bridge Fest report, the volunteers were city staff and city staff spouses. It was not, a couple of council members stepped up, and we appreciate that. Some can't because they have businesses, some didn't because they just didn't show up. The community was in some community tents, but when we sent out the call for volunteers, we did not receive volunteers. It was city staff that said, I'll come in and I'll work selling tickets, which is fine, because as my friend Matt tells me, Joel, this is an investment in the community. When I say we lost thirteen thousand dollars on this event, he goes, no, you invested thirteen thousand. But if we're going to keep coming up with new ideas that the city needs to be doing, we're going to need the community to step up and just run with it. A perfect example is the most awesome thing the city does is probably the living history tour. That is all put on by volunteers that are not associated with the city of Alleghan, and it is amazing what they pull off. The Friends of Oakwood Cemetery pull that off. They don't rely on the city to give a history tour of our city-owned cemetery. They roll up their sleeves, and they dig in their heels, and they do a great job at it. So as you guys come up with these other great ideas, and I know a lot of you have great ideas, run with it. The part of the Bridge Fest, that Brew Hop, Point Five K, that was the three breweries, you know, who said, hey, here's an idea. And we said, run with it, high five, go for it, you know? And we had zero interaction with it. It was all run by them. So that's where we're going, because we are overworked. I mean, Bridge Fest week, some employee put in a sixty-six hour work week that week, which is way too much for one employee. So I just want council to be aware when you're coming up with these ideas, what the true, what the true strain is on our non-union employees.
Mike, if you want to stay after, I can, help me, we can write a plan or, or something, or try to go a little farther, okay? You explain what you're thinking, yeah?
Okay, whoever, like, whoever just hop in.
I will, sounds good. I will need just a minute. I did want to explain, just briefly, my no vote on the Girl Scout property. I love the concept, and I think we need the housing, no problem with that. My only no vote was for the entry and exit of the, of the development. I do have just a general statement that I'm only one-seventh of the council, and these are just my personal opinions. That, but I think it's important for me to say my personal feelings and for the progress of the city. So hopefully, hopefully, people will take it that way, and anyone else can join later on. So, um, the divisive words of diversity, equity, and inclusion have gotten a bad rap these days, as we know. But they're not just words. They're the foundation of a just and vibrant community. Every individual, regardless of race, religion, gender identity, immigration status, or ability, brings unique strengths that enrich our city. I strongly support policies that affirm immigrant rights, access to education and healthcare, protections from discrimination, and a pathway to citizenship. Immigrants contribute economically, socially, and culturally, and it's our responsibility to treat them with dignity. Marginalized groups, whether based on race, sexual orientation, disability, or economic status, deserve a fair value in our city so that they're not just seen, but also heard. By investigating, I'm sorry, by investing in the initiatives and the meanings of the words, diversity, equity, and inclusion, supporting immigrant rights and uplifting the marginalized, we build a stronger, more unified community. Let us all lead with empathy, courage, and conviction. Thank you.
Patrick, did you have anything? We'll finish on that side, I guess, come over here.
A comment from the tenant Bridge Fest, the blight ordinance. The letters that people receive, there might be some vagueness there. I've never seen one, I'm not sure how detailed they are, but one resident was mentioning they didn't really know what it was for.
So, at your July fourteenth meeting, we are going to, on the agenda will be a discussion about dangerous structures. We have a handful of vacant, blighted houses that we need to bring to your attention and figure out what direction council wants us to go. In regards to the communication and letter, we can expand on that presentation, that discussion, share the form of the letter that we send out. That has been reviewed by previous councils. And, you know, I don't want to say it's been approved, but it said, you know, it's what we send out, and we can, you know, get your feedback on it. Not knowing exactly what the commenter, the discussion was with the resident.
One of the examples, it was one resident had two examples, one of them was, he got one, there was a trash bag on his deck, or his patio for extended period of time.
Yep.
Didn't really know. He thought it was something else, but it was the bag, so it was just confusion, I guess.
Sure, you can't have junk on your, you know, our, our ordinance is clear, you can't have junk in your yard.
I don't know if it said that in the letter or not, though.
Okay.
I'm not sure what is it.
If you, you didn't share that. Yeah, if you remember the address, we can look at it, but yeah, we can go over that stuff.
Just kind of, maybe we get some examples, and maybe it just needs clarity, pictures, or just a better description of what the actual violation is, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, like, just more detailed, more specific, I guess.
Okay, we, yeah, we can look at that. We should, we'll look at the examples of the letters we send out right now. We'll, you know, talk about that at your fourteenth, on your meeting at the fourteenth.
I would think it would help with compliance, to get stuff done, if you know what's actually wrong. When you don't know, you kind of, maybe. So, Malina, you have anything tonight?
Yes. Just one other thing is that it usually goes out to occupant, which I don't read those often. So just, just a point, when I get something to occupant, I'm assuming it's a sales thing and throw it somewhere. So I just, I just wanted to make that point that.
Thank you.
Also, at the booth, wanted to try to be positive. People are very excited about the green spaces, wanted to know how to purchase. I did refer them to city hall, because I said I don't know if we're even there yet. And then I had three ladies that complimented us on our walking trails. And, and then the tie-dye shirt thing, huge hit. I sat there when I was not busy for a very long time and watched so many beautiful shirts, so thanks and good job.
Doug Swirson, Water Utilities Department, did a really good job with that.
Carl, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, might as well make it a full plate. I've been hearing, like we heard tonight, some people with concerns about the sale of properties. And I wonder if we need some sort of a plan going forward, where we can expand our transparency somehow to make it easier for people to understand what properties are, the city owns that might be willing to sell. I don't know, we just seem to be getting a lot of upset people, and there's got to be a way to solve that. I'm not a Realtor, so I don't know. I could maybe build a computer that could solve the problem, but somebody else has to write the software. Anyway, if we can come up with some sort of a plan to make it a lot easier for people to understand what's going on, see what's going on, with, with the sale of property, I think that'd be a really good thing. And second, Bridge Fest was great. I'd like to thank staff, Parker was out there a lot, I saw Joel out there. Again, the water department was out there doing a really good service. Everybody enjoyed it. I really enjoyed smashing that car, so appreciate that, Will, for getting that taken care of. It was a great day all around. Thank you.
For myself, talk of the sale of properties, specifically, I was on council during the first RFP, request for proposal for the Girl Scout property, and I think on this one came in before we switched councils, that this development came in.
No, city council approved this due diligence in December.
But I thought that they, like, there was some proposal, or at least somebody interested, that's what.
Yeah, there could have been a discussion, but it was.
Early discussion, we didn't approve, yeah, due diligence.
Yep.
When we put that out, we put it out for RFP. If anybody ever wants to buy or purchase any city property, they can always put in a petition that can be brought to the city council. They can put it in through the city hall to say, I'd like to buy such property. We've had that many times, such as like the property by J.C. Park. Comes up to us, we can accept or deny it. We also have put out things just on the general market, just open, you know, market. And we've had some success with that in the past and some not such success. I think the old public restrooms were just sold that way, where we just put it as a listing, where the hair salon is now. So I've been through many property sales. We are always, it's transparent on it, it's actually in our charter. There is no closed meetings, except for when we're considering a sale of property to determine like, a price. That's one of the reasons that we would go into a closed meeting, but it's, that would be about it. It's just to consider that pricing, because you can't do that in the open, because that doesn't work very well when you're proposing a sale to have them know what you're going to sell it for. So, um, other than that, I think that will, if not, if there's anything else that anybody has. Otherwise, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-four.